Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 24, 2022, Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. I am Dr. Flanagan, Superintendent Schools, calling this meeting to order. This is our annual reorganization meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for a salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into introductions, I would also ask everyone to please take a moment of reflection to recognize the 14 souls and families, 15 souls and families that were that were lost today in Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. This time we get introductions down to my left.
Hi, Nate Moreno, next year's student representative.
Grace Jambley, student representative.
Dustine Puma.
Jeff Boe.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Becky Stanton.
Anthony Tenerella.
Danielle Athanas.
Robert Mullen.
Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move to item two, election of chair. This time, I'll seek a nomination for the school committee chair. If more than one nominee is forthcoming, the nominee who receives the greatest number of votes will serve as the chair. In the event of a tie, the process will repeat itself until the chair is elected. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Rebecca Stanton as chair of our committee again for this year, please.
We have a nomination for Mr. Mullen. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Tenerella seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That's unanimous, six zero zero. Madam Chair, it's yours.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on to item two B is the election of the vice chair. I'll seek, I'll request any nominations for the vice chair and, you know, the same rules apply if there are more than one nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Tony Tenerella as vice chair, please.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That carries six zero zero. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Congratulations to them.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving on to two B, the election of the recording secretary. I'll seek any nominations for the, or I'll request any nominations for the recording secretary.
Madam Chair, I will nominate Ryan McMahon this evening.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That carries six zero zero. Congratulations to Ryan, and we'll make sure that we notify him of that.
Tough being late.
Oh, boy.
And we'll move on to the review of the open meeting law.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the folder tonight is the annual information I would provide to each committee member. It's a good refresher for those. I know Danielle is new, so it's good information to have. We're obligated to provide this each and every year. Danielle is a new committee member, has a document that she needs to fill out and get back to us, but it is information about the open meeting law. It's information about executive session, what is acceptable, what is not acceptable. It talks about the role of the school committee. So those are three standard fare items that we have in the drive each and every new meeting or new election cycle.
And then also the executive session, which would be item two E, the role of the school committee, item two F, that's also in the drive, and then...
It is.
The next is two G, sorry, I lost my place there, to discuss the subcommittee meetings. Dr. Flanagan?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we have several standing subcommittees of the school committee, and each year, I think that the process seems to work pretty well. What I recommend that we do it again. What I'll do is I will send out an email to all committee members with a brief description of each subcommittee. You can find which subcommittee piques your interest a little bit and give me your top two or three choices. I will look at what that comes out to be and will assign committees accordingly. That'll come back to the full committee in June for official vote.
And Dr. Flanagan, just from a negotiation standpoint, are there any teacher negotiations this year?
There are no teacher negotiations this year, but we do have two collective bargaining units that we are negotiating with this year, the custodians and admin assistants.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, I will seek a motion to approve the April 12, 2022 policy subcommittee meeting minutes and the April 26, 2022 school committee meeting minutes.
So moved?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Probably abstain. Okay, one abstention. So we have five zero one for the approval of minutes. Citizen time, we have no citizens here tonight. Correspondence, there's none at this time, Dr. Flanagan?
None at this time.
Okay. And moving on to personnel. So we have a notification for requests for maternity leave from Danielle Van Gelder, TMS School Counselor for October 2022. Congratulations, Danielle. And notification of resignations of Melanie Chandonay, a board certified behavior analyst, Ally Regan, THS Special Educator, Special Education Teacher, Ryan Vigent, TES Paraprofessional. Good luck to all of you. And then moving on to staff attaining professional status for fiscal '23 is Kathryn Cardinal, Thomas, Timothy Doust, Marla Fisher, Danielle Moran, Alexandria Panagiotakis, Jamie Silva, Stephen Stanley, and Hannah Stowens. Congratulations. Next is the notification of new hires for the 2022-2023 school year. We have Bethany Shudo, a district-wide special, uh, school social worker, Nicole Stetson, grade six through 12, school psychologist, Cassidy Tyros, TES School Counselor, and Daniel Costigan? Did I say that right?
Correct.
THS Special Social Studies. And staff renewals with non-professional statuses, we have Rachel Collins, Kat Cooney, Jenna Durkin, Hannah Falwitz, Susan Gadbin, Carrie Jones, Kayla O'Shea, Brock Riley, Jason Stewart, Jacqueline Tenerella, Samantha Warm, and Barbara Zinnerman. Moving on to share the success, this is the last one for you, Grace.
Yes, Madam Chair, you might have noticed a new face at the table as well. So Grace will give us the share of the success update, and then she'll introduce Nate Moreno, who talked a little bit about the process and how he became the student representative this year.
Great. So TMS thanks the school committee for supporting the school building committee's work to get the project approved by the community. MCAS ended today. Only makeup tests remain for some students who are absent. Students did an excellent job as they gave their best effort through many testing sessions. TMS also had a very successful spring season in sports and extracurriculars, including the return of the Knowledge Bowl. They are hosting a Step Up Day for fifth to seventh graders on June 9th and a Field Day on June 10th, which will include Spike Ball, Kick Ball, Water Games. And the eighth grade end-of-year events are going to include the end-of-year dance, Cape and Whale Watch, and a moving-on ceremony on Pierce Field. At THS, 10th graders completed the math MCAS last week, and the 9th graders are going to be taking the biology MCAS June 7th and 8th. Congratulations to the theater members Natalie and Lila on receiving Tammy Award nominations for their performance in The Lightning Thief. Emma Hogan and Emma Angelo recently attended the Massachusetts Women in Sports Day at Faneuil Hall. The Academic Excellence Award Ceremony took place earlier this month, recognizing 22 members from the class of 2022 that earned a GPA of 3.75 or higher during their high school career. And graduation is going to take place on June 3 at 7:00 p.m. Senior Awards Night is going to be later tonight, and prom is on Thursday, and are pre-promably held at 5:30 p.m. And then THS seniors also thank everyone who supported the Tingsboro Scholarship Trust. And this is my replacement. Nate?
Hi, I'm Nate. I'm a junior right now at Tingsboro High School. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'm excited to be here. So just to walk you through the process of how you'd be nominated for student representative. First off, it started off with a Google form. It was sent out to all members of the junior class, and it was an open-ended question, just asking who you thought would be best fit to be student representative. That, those results narrowed it down to three people, I believe, and each of us was asked to write an essay about why we thought we would be best fit for student representative. That was then sent out to some administrators and staff in Tingsboro High School, and then whichever essay was voted on as the best or why, or the best fit they thought was nominated to be student representative. So that's pretty much it.
That's great. Well, welcome. We're happy to have you here, Nate.
Thank you.
Grace, you have some tough shoes to follow with Grace leaving, but we're very excited to have you here, and we look forward to the year ahead with you.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you very much.
And Grace, you know, congratulations on your senior year.
Thank you.
I think earlier you were saying that you finished classes today, right?
Yep.
And we look forward to seeing you graduate on Friday. We're so happy for you, excited for your future.
Thank you.
Great job, Grace.
For subcommittee updates, we have none at this time, and we can move on to unfinished business. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll jump into the slide deck at this point. So we'll go to the first slide. Some of you hurt. It was a big vote last week. And I'm just so thankful to everyone in the community, so thankful to the efforts of the School Building Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, certainly this board here, as well as all those true advocates. There were tons of advocates for the school, whether it was the Vote Yes Committee or just people behind the scenes, our entire middle school staff who gave up their time to really show the condition of that school, really advocate for the need. I think that the vote was overwhelming, that supported it, and it's truly an exciting process, a time for us now and where we're going to go. What we're going to talk about is the School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night, and that's where we're really going to start to get into some of the details of what's next. So I just thought I'd kind of give you a little overview of where we are right now, where we're going, and the kind of the internal steps that were taken. So we'll start with the feasibility study. Tomorrow night, the final bills will be presented from the feasibility study. And as you recall, if you, if you recall, in November of 2019, the town at a special town meeting voted to appropriate up to $950,000 for the feasibility study and schematic design. We're very happy to say that that came in $53,000 under budget. What typically happens is that money is then moved into the owner's soft contingency for the actual project itself. So it's not only money goes back to the town, it goes in the contingency part. And then at the end of the whole entire process, when we close things out, whatever's left over then is not borrowed and/or not reimbursed at that time from MSBA. So tomorrow night, we absolutely close out the feasibility phase of the project. So that's where we are today. We'll go to the next slide. What's coming next is the project phase itself. So the first thing that needs to happen is we need, we as a community, need to receive paperwork from MSBA, and the community needs to sign off and say that we agreed to borrowing up to $82.5 million for the project. Also tomorrow night, the School Building Committee will approve a contract extension for J CJ, who's our architect, so that they can continue with the detailed design. Leftfield, who is our project manager, so they can continue. All those, all that money and all those numbers were already budgeted as part of the process before. And then the next real big step is securing a construction manager at risk. The construction manager at risk went out to bid probably a month and a half ago. The bids came, nine different firms were interested, showed interest, took packets. Seven firms submitted packets. We have a CMR procurement subcommittee. That subcommittee is made up of a representative from J CJ, a representative from Leftfield, Matt Hanson, Colin Moisel, Mr. Messina, and Amy Pizarsky as the community at large representative, who has a construction background and who advocated for the CMR process. That subcommittee of the School Building Committee will vet and interview the seven CMR candidates, and they will make a recommendation to the full School Building Committee as to which construction manager we should go with. We anticipate that all happening by the end of June. We also anticipate that J CJ and Leftfield will work very hard in, over the next two to three weeks, to really develop what the project's scope is going to look like. Right now, it's, we heard this, we heard that. They're going to dial this in and tighten up the schedule for us and have a presentation to the School Building Committee in early June as to what the actual schedule is going to look like moving on. They're also going to look at what it's going to take to get in front of the planning board, in front of the Conservation Commission, all of the town boards where they have to go through the entire permitting process, all the while doing the detailed design on the side. So there's a lot of information to come, a lot of information that we don't have. As a school building committee, we haven't met for almost a month and a half. We, I mean, the hate was in the barn at this point. We were waiting for two votes to happen. The two votes proved, proved favorable for us, so we are going forward now. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow night's meeting to really get some more information about what comes next. We do know, we can go to the next slide, we do know that throughout the process, the very first step was demoing the existing gym, central office, and the catwalk that attaches to the middle school. Two years ago, when we began having these conversations about what our best option was, we anticipated that that was going to be the first demo. So we knew that we had to really start thinking about where Central Office was going to go. We have a contingency plan for phys ed. We have space here at the high school. The kids will come over here for phys ed, but we didn't necessarily have dedicated space for Central Office. So working with Mr. Ogden extensively over the past several months, as this thing came closer to reality, we nailed down where Central Office is going to be. So Central Office will actually relocate to the second floor here of Tingsboro High School. And that makes the most sense, given the fact that construction is going to happen on this campus. So we all kind of need to be around and be available for that. To do that, to accommodate us, I'm looking at Mr. Ogden's list, we're going to have to relocate our Bridges classroom. We're going to have to move our school resource officers. We're going to have to move, move one related service provider. We'll have to move one related service testing room. And additionally, we had a spot reserved for the MSBA up in the back that they're surrendering or giving back to us, because when construction starts, they'll actually have two trailers on site, and they don't need a dedicated room in the school. So we're going to take that back. So there will be some movement within the school. Mr. Ogden assures me he has a solid plan. He's already spoken with all the people who will be impacted. So our plan is to really think about this summer, packing up what we need to pack and moving into the high school. So on the first day of school next year, we are already functioning in this school. What I don't want to happen is for kids and staff to get into routines and then us to insert ourselves in January. So we want to start the year outright where we are here, staff knows we're here, and the operation just happens for the next three years. So we have, we will have certainly a learning curve on what it's going to be like not being in our central office, but we're confident that it's something that we can certainly manage. So those are the next steps in terms of what's going on, closing out, starting to think about the process and what we are internally are looking at right now. I'm happy to answer any questions I can about that. I don't, again, I don't have a lot of information, but certainly I think, you know, the building project will be a regular update at every school committee meeting moving forward.
Are there any discussion points?
The only thing that I would like to add and just remind people is that the, it came in at 897,000, of which half of that, I believe, the 54% reimbursement. So it's actually a really good number.
So it didn't cost the town that 897?
No.
Right.
Nope.
No, both 54%.
And we've already gotten a lot of that reimbursed from MSBA.
Correct.
So.
Correct. So we're in a good spot.
Big number.
Great. Nine B, the math course offerings and pathways.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the last meeting, I gave you a real quick primer that we were almost at the finish line of some work that's been going on for basically four years at this point in time. So in your drive, you have a final three-page update on the mathematics course offerings and pathways. These two slides are just a real quick cheat sheet for you to take a look at and for the community to take a look at. As you remember, three, we've done three years of work with Dr. Hillary Kreisenberg from the Mathematics Center at Leslie University to really look at instructional practices and programming at the elementary school. We're very proud of that work. We've seen some incredible gains coming out of the elementary school. We brought Dr. Kreisenberg up to work with the middle school this year. She's done some job embedded PD all through the school year. She's actually gone out and hired another gentleman, Kit Golin, who has a lot of chops coming out of New York State and doing a lot of good work with middle school and high school secondary mathematics. She actually reached out to him and brought him on board because she's working with school districts like ours that are, have now benefited from the elementary work and are looking to maximize the skill sets and abilities of children at the middle and high school. So Kit is also on board with a lot of this work. So what we've been doing is we've been looking at our pathways, and we've been looking at our programming at the middle school. So what this takes you through is the goal that we really wanted to talk about providing middle school students with much more equitable access to mathematics programming and not leveling and tracking them at such a young age. All of the research nationally, which is attached to this document, and then I kind of prefaced here a little bit, supports what they're calling delayed acceleration, as long as possible for children to peak at different points in their academic career to make sure students are ready for this. So we have been unleveled for two years with, I think most people in this room know, at the middle school because of COVID. And what we recognized, it has allowed kids to kind of peak in their own fashion and to get differentiated instruction support in a pretty meaningful way, in a little different manner than it happened before when we had leveled math in seventh and eighth grade. So we're proud of this work. Middle school staff is on board with this change at the middle school to happen next year or to continue really after this year. The shift now is then we have to work with the high school faculty on what our pathways will look like as we move forward. So we've met with the, with the high school faculty and the department head, Katie Rich, and Mr. Gogan will be coming in for a fifth year with our, that'll be our final year of the contract with Leslie, and he'll be coming in on all of our early release days and on some job embedded days. He'll be working with the high school to put together this new pathway. So the kids will come out of eighth grade, everybody will go into Algebra I that freshman year, then everybody will go into Geometry in 10th grade, still at the CP honors level for credit purposes. But then the delayed acceleration happens in 11th grade. Well, then they'll jump into a CP Algebra II class or what's going to be called a Compressed Algebra I Precalculus Combo Class.
Algebra II.
Sorry, my bad. Thank you. Algebra II. I have really dead eyes right now. Algebra II and, and Precalculus at the honors level. That will be a year-long course, very rigorous and robust. And then if you see the color coding, those students will have multiple pathways to go. A lot of the research talks about how by the time the kid finishes their sophomore year, they're much more in tune with themselves for college and career application. They have a better understanding of do I have that math-science lean? Do I have a liberal arts lean? It allows kids to peak a little later, to get their interest level a little higher in certain subject areas, and then really track up into some of those higher-end math classes. So we're still getting, all of our students currently who want to take AP Calculus to that level, we do believe that the national data shows that you will actually see more kids going into a higher pathway over time with this new model. We're excited by it. It also closes the equity gap. We have a real obligation for some populations, female students, minority students, first-generation students, low-income families. We have a real dedication to certain populations of kids that the STEM opportunities have theoretically been closed off to in the past for a lot of reasons. This will help to level that playing field for students. So proud of the work we've done so far, and the bulk of the work now will be instructional practices at the middle school next year, and at the high school, it's going to be on redeveloping these courses. So we'll have a redesign of Algebra I, a redesign of Geometry, and a full design of that Algebra II Precalculus class, and that'll all happen next year.
I'd just like to add, if I may, Dr. Branko.
Yep.
I think this is, this has been a focus in our district for the past five years. When you, when we first started together, it was, it was about, we need to fix elementary math. And we started at the elementary school. We've made a significant investment in mathematics, partnering with Leslie University and Dr. Kreisberg, and this is absolutely the right course of action for us at this time. It, it kind of was a trickle-up effect, which is usually different, right? We use a backward design, we talked about that. We started AP Calc and you work off of that. But we really needed to start our elementary school, and the work that's happened down there with our teachers and our dedication to a math coach at the elementary school has been outstanding, and we're starting to see and reap the benefits of it at TMS. We anticipate that push-up when we get to Tingsboro High School as well. So it was a systemic, strategic approach, and again, a significant investment on the district, but one that we think has been worth every single penny we've put into it.
I have a question on the grade 12 math. You know, when we look at the calculus, the AP Calculus, AB and BC, are these full-year courses? Are they part-year courses?
They are fully. All of those AP classes will be full-year classes. And that's, that's not an A, you know, most people know that that's not AB/BC combo. Those are two separate courses.
Okay.
So that's just placed, it's placed that way on the, on the design.
So how would one, AP Calc, AB is a full-year course. How would one then participate in BC?
So BC.
We've run them opposite years, some years, right?
Yeah, BC, and I'm going back to my Don Champion days.
Right.
BC essentially is four more chapters, and we've never essentially offered two separate courses. They run at the same time. So BC is AB at a more accelerated pace to get to BC. So it's not two distinctly different courses.
Okay.
It's just more content on the back end of that. I did not take either of those in high school, so I'm taking Don Champion's word for that.
I think what's important to also know is students coming out of 10th grade into that 11th grade split, if you read all the way through the report, you'll see that there'll be a protocol in there for a student who's a reach student. If they really want to challenge themselves, even though maybe some of the data doesn't necessarily show it, and they just say, listen, I'm going to put my head down. I have the aptitude. I really want to do this. That pathway is there, and in the first try, those courses are going to start in a very similar curricular fashion. And then at the end of the first try, if I sit back and I go, oh, I really just, I guess you were right. I bit off a little more than I could chew here, that student can jump back down into a comfort level. On the opposite end of that, a student that started in that Algebra II can make the same decision. If they're really killing it after first trimester junior year, they can challenge up. So that's been difficult in the past because they haven't started in a similar fashion, and then they're behind the eight ball going in another direction. So we think that's kind of a nice opportunity for juniors who might be right on that split level. Either I'm not sure what my college career pathway is, and I want to feel this out, or I'm ready. I'm finally ready to challenge myself. Please don't let my academic transcript from the past hold me back in the future.
And I think 30,000 for view. We're having kids who are entering their junior high school make a decision about whether they want AP Calc, not entering 7th grade.
Thank you, yeah.
I think that's, that's the message we need to get out there. Where parents essentially making decisions for kids at, in 7th grade, that you're going to be a STEM major or an engineer.
Yeah.
Which is all well and good. They can still get there and do that, but the kid will have more, the student will have more input when they're junior.
That's a great point. Yep.
So I have a question. The Algebra II and Precalculus is going to be in one year. Is there going to be enough time to do that? Because right now, Precalculus is rumored to be the hardest class, and to have that in conjunction with Algebra II, is that almost too much of a big of a, too big of a bite of the apple for them to be handling in the course of one year?
So I'm going to give you a layman's answer based on what the math professionals have told us. So the consultants, the high school, the medical staff has talked a lot about this. The mathematical concepts in Algebra II and Precalculus are very similar in a lot of ways. There's a lot of overlap. So that, that's going to be a complete redesign of what's going to be called a compressed course. So it won't be the A to Z Algebra II course, nor will it be the A to Z Precalculus course. It'll be a completely redesigned compressed course based on the mass frameworks and standards. Almost think of like power standards and picking what absolutely has to be known, and we'll work with our 12th grade teachers who teach the other courses to make sure kids are ready for whichever level they get to.
So it will almost be like thematic, like where it's the same concepts?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And it's more of a thematic here where you're dealing with these concepts throughout the course of the year, thematically?
Yes, and that will be a year-long course where some of the other courses are two tri classes.
And if we're talking in terms of our current eighth graders.
Yep.
They'll be, will they be slotting into this Algebra I CP or H next year?
No, so our current eighth graders had the regular unleveled math. We had a small group of students who took a challenge Algebra acceleration program for one trimester so that they can come into the model we're currently running. So our current 7th graders or rising 8th graders will be the first ones to go through this model, which is why the timing's great. So our high school faculty has an entire year to build this program with the help of the consultant during our professional development time and be ready for those kids an entire school year from now.
Sure. And, but they'll still be the pathway for the student, the, the current eighth graders to continue on today's.
Yes, yeah. There's going to be a little bit of a gradual release over time, taking care of that group of kids as they go. Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Branko, thank you for that presentation. That was great. Moving on to new business, the Fiscal '23 Valley Collaborative Board Members Appointments.
Yes, Madam Chair. So thank you. Annually, we have to appoint a member of this board or myself as a designated to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. For those of you who don't know, or for those at home listening who don't, are aware, Valley Collaborative is our regional special education collaborative. It consists of Chelmsford, Billricka, Tewksbury, North Middlesex, Drakeett, Groton, Dunstable, Neshobatech, Westford, and Tingsboro. We are a nine-member board. I will say that since I've been on the board, all appointees have been sitting superintendents.
Great. I will seek a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Flanagan to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the Fiscal '23 year.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That carries six zero zero. Congratulations, Dr. Flanagan. Moving on to finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For signing of bills tonight, there were 13 warrants presented to the, to the committee. I do have them all back signed. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Also, in replace of a meeting on May 10th, Mr. Mullen is your single signer, came in and approved six bill warrants. Again, the list of numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. For signing of payroll, since we last approved payroll, there have been three, the payroll of April 25th, May 9th, and May 23rd. Again, in the drive is the list with the warrant number and the amounts. And one item under other, if I may, given that, that your next business meeting is not scheduled until late July, I wanted to give the committee an opportunity to review the elementary school playground proposals and what we've done so far. Those proposals were due last Thursday. We did have three... We did have three submittals, Alti Play Parks and Rec Site Specifics and O'Brien Playground Equipment on Thursday. Colin Loizel, who's the town's chief procurement officer, myself, Jake Swicker, who is the town engineer, as well as Mr. Semitelli and Mrs. Kavanaugh raided the non-price proposals. Alti Play was our highest selection. We then opened the price proposals and we were pleased to find out that Alti Play was the lowest price in that group. So they came in slightly under four hundred thousand dollars. We did have a contract prepared at town hall, and given that we don't have a meeting for another month, I would ask the committee to have a motion to award the TES playground replacement to Alti Play Parks and Playgrounds out of Blackstone, Mass. for a base contract price of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars, and to authorize the chair to sign that contract.
Madam Chair, I would happily make that motion.
Very happy to second it.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. Thank you for all that work, Mr. Messina.
You're welcome. And just for next steps, we actually have a meeting scheduled next week with Alti Play to get the final design. Hopefully, with the signed contract, he can start ordering the equipment and we will, you know, do our best to expedite that project. We do have a target no later than end of October, based upon how the poured-in-place rubber needs to go in, hoping we can either meet that or do something a little earlier.
So, if I may, so that project will start over the summer possibly?
Yes.
For groundwork and?
Yes, they can start demoing the playground equipment there and getting the site ready. I think the biggest time concern will be the equipment delivery.
Perfect, thank you.
And I'd just like to acknowledge once more the capital asset committee for supporting this playground. It's been a big need at the elementary school, and, you know, I'm really appreciative of all the work that went into it. I know Tony and Rob were on that committee, as well as members of the finance committee and Board of Selectmen, so very appreciative of that work. I'm not going to cut off the last slide like I typically do, so.
Thank you. And that's probably, we'll put that on the agenda. So I just want to bring your attention to the upcoming celebrations that are occurring in the district. As I mentioned, the school building committee tomorrow night first, that's not really a celebration, although I guess it could be a celebration. We have a lot of reason to be happy. We have high school graduation this Friday, fifth grade moving on, you can see that, I can't see it from this far, but on June fourteenth, June fifteenth, eighth grade moving on ceremony. We do have our school committee work session from six to nine with Dr. Ash on June twenty-first. And I just put these two dates in as placeholders. This is typically what we've done in the past, one at the end of July, one at the end of August. So if we could do seven PM meetings, I think that kind of makes sense to do one towards the end of the month. If we need a single signer to come in, Mr. Messina can coordinate that with Mr. Mullin, hopefully. And then we can talk about, probably in July, what our full schedule for next year will look like, our full meeting schedule. But if we could put these in as placeholders, I think that would be helpful. And that's what we have for upcoming information. I don't have the full schedule of school building committee, but once I get that, we'll incorporate that as well.
Great.
Madam Chair, do we have to make a motion to approve July twenty-sixth and August twenty-third?
I think we should. Would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
I will not be here on July twenty-sixth.
Okay.
That's my husband's birthday, and those days are sacred in our family.
Understandable.
So I will not be here.
Skipping out already, huh?
Look.
All those in favor?
I'll be there first, and I'll be there after.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. We miss meetings from time to time.
Okay. I'm just going to ignore Rob, is what I'm going to do.
That's why we have seven members. Well, we put Rob next to you for a real reason there. Moving on to school committee discussion, so we do have two new members here tonight. Typically, we go around the room and, you know, anything that you want to share, discuss, feel free to do so. And so Nate, I'm going to put you in the hot seat, you're first.
Nothing at this time, just thanks to consider the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Grace?
Hi, so thank you to Ms. Fairbanks, I don't know if she watches these, but big thank you. So thank you all for the opportunity to be on the school board meeting, I did learn a lot while I was here, and good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Abstained?
I'm going to wish Grace luck in all her future endeavors.
Thank you.
I'm going to welcome Danielle. It's going to be a lot of fun working with you over the next couple of years, and that's all.
All right. Again, thank, you know, it's been great having you here, Grace, and all the best to you in the future, and welcome aboard, Nate. And, you know, Danielle, obviously, congratulations, and, you know, it's going to be good having you on this board, and nothing further.
Dr. Branko?
I just want to say thank you to the community for the overwhelming support for the middle school project. It's been a long time coming, years and years of hard work for a lot of people, and so it's great to see it finally happen.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Rob?
Welcome, Nate.
Thank you.
I know it's a grueling process and a lot of work to get on here, but it can sometimes be a lot of fun, it can, especially if you don't listen to certain members. Grace, thank you so very much for your work this past year. You've been wonderful, upheld the high standards of this position, and I wish you nothing but the best going forward in your scholastic career and work at some point. Stay in school as long as possible, okay? Thank you so very much to the community for their, again, overwhelming support for this much-needed new building. I was absolutely overwhelmed by the amount of support myself. I was hopeful, but seeing people come out and work very hard to get this project approved was just fantastic to see. You know, as Dr. Flanagan had stated several times, we only got one shot at this, and our community understood that this time and gave us the support, so thank you very much. Welcome to Danielle, to, for your first year here. I want to wish you a lot of luck, and thank you again, Madam Chair, for stepping up for another year. Appreciate it greatly. One thing I do want to say is that I want to talk about how, you know, a few statements that I've heard in the community with numbers slowly rising with COVID over the past couple of weeks, some members have asked if there will be a return of a mask mandate. I know most of us are very, very hopeful that we are able to end this year very quickly and not even have to consider that.
Amen.
Amen is right. None of us here, I think, well, I'll speak for myself, I don't want to see a return of a mask mandate at all. I would, however, encourage those family members, staff, students, to wear them if you feel it's necessary. There've been several occasions that I've felt it's necessary, either at work or in public, and I wear it. But I think we're all hoping for a, to be able to finish up this year without that. Other than that, I have nothing else, and.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you for putting up with my long-winded speeches.
We enjoyed them. Danielle?
Grace, good luck.
Thank you.
As you graduate, and college is awesome, and I'm so jealous that you get to do your college in the city, so good luck. Nate, we're going to have to be newbies together next year, so we got this, it's okay. And other than that, I just want to congratulate Becky on her reelection as well, and just thank everybody for being so encouraging. This has been something I've been wanting to do for a long time, and I just hope I can make the community proud. Thank you.
All right. A lot of the comments have already been made, but welcome Danielle, congratulations, Becky, congratulations on the election. Nate, welcome.
Thank you.
Again, don't listen to a thing I say. Grace, congratulations, you're going to do awesome in Harvard, and I love you.
Thank you.
Make us all proud as you already have. Dr. Branko, I believe this is your last meeting too, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you very much for everything you've done for us over the last six and a half years, I believe, right? So thank you for that. Thank you to the community for, again, the middle school project, it's huge, a lot of people put a lot of hours into this, Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, Joe Messina, you almost became a doctor. The entire staff, administration, Left Field, J C J, the school building committee, the Board of Selectmen, the finance committee, the list goes on and on and on. This has been eleven years in the making, and although the average person doesn't pay attention to it until it hits the ballot, there are hundreds and hundreds of hours that went into this project, and I thank you all for reading the mailers and digesting the information and making, in my opinion, the right decision for the children of Tingsboro Public Schools and the community as a whole. So thank you for that. To the parents of the elementary school, there is a playground coming.